Close session, set at number seven to number three. Well, actually, it should be number five. Uh, the change of agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Donald. End of discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public comment. Starting public comment this time. No public comment this time. Number five, close session. Let our aide consult the township attorney regarding pending litigation under M L's M C L one five point two six eight E.
Make a motion, we go into closed session at this time.
Second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Donald. Deputy clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Clifford?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Kandow?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Addis here. Thank you. Do you need Mr. Safe and Trombley to?
They can.
Okay. Gentlemen, we need both of you for closed session. And deputy supervisor. Hey, just for the public, we're just waiting on our other attorney for the other two items, so we're gonna knock this out real quick. Sorry for the delay.
I'd like to make a motion that we go back into meeting at?
Open session.
Open session at five thirteen.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Donald. We'll make an open session. Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Kandow?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Open session five fourteen. Thank you. Uh, deputy clerk, please read the resolution.
How about clerk?
Clerk, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Kandow.
Resolution, two thousand seventeen dash five Township of Lennox. A, whereas, under Act three forty-two of nineteen thirty-nine, Macomb County has previously issued bonds to finance certain Lennox Township public improvement projects. B, whereas, public improvement projects that are the subjects of the previously issued bonds have not been completed and all costs thereof have been paid. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Adding extra words here. C, whereas, pursuant to the bond agreements between Macomb County and Lennox Township relating to such projects, upon, one, request and resolution by Lennox Township, and, two, approval of the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner as county agency, the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner may use surplus funds from the bond sales, the surplus funds, for additional sanitary sewer and storm drain improvements. D, whereas, Macomb County Circuit Court case number two zero one six dash zero zero four five five two dash C K, also referred to as the lawsuit, involves claims related to inter alia certain improvements made by Rickman Construction to the twenty-six mile road sanitary sewer in Lennox Township. E, whereas, Lennox Township has determined that the improvements were necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare of Lennox Township and its residents. F, whereas, the parties have settled the lawsuit with the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner agreeing to pay the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the improvements as set forth in the settlement agreement among the parties to the lawsuit. Upon passage of this resolution, be it therefore resolved that Lennox Township hereby requests that the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner as county agency use seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the surplus funds to make payment to Rickman as set forth in the settlement agreement, and consents to and authorizes such payment by the Macomb County Public Works Commissioner.
Thank you.
You're up.
Motion on this resolution?
I make a motion, we passed this resolution as written by the attorneys and parties involved for to release that money to Rickman Construction.
I second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. That's resolution two thousand seventeen dash five. Deputy clerk, roll call, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Kandow?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Addis. Would he want to copy that right away, or?
I think he does, but it really doesn't say anything on it yet, but.
New business.
I'm sorry. I'll get one who can send it to me, correct?
I will be the only one tomorrow or Wednesday.
Thank you. Other new business, uh, Mr. Joppick, can you lead off?
Sure.
Prior to Mr. Casson, that'd be great.
Yeah. Uh, this, uh, the check item relates to the medical marijuana issue that the township board has been considering for quite some time now. There have been, uh, two, uh, public meetings in the township board where presentations were given to the public and to the board regarding what the new law. Oh, that was on.
Yeah, two.
Was that the white push? Yes, I got it.
Thank you.
Yep. What the new law, uh, regarding the medical marijuana facilities licensing act was all about, how it interrelated with the prior pre-existing medical marijuana, uh, act in Michigan. And, uh, under the new law, it enables the township to consider whether it wants to opt-in by adopting ordinances that would enable medical marijuana facilities to, uh, possibly locate in the township if they chose the township, uh, as a place, uh, for them to open one of their types of businesses. And we talked about five different types of facilities, uh, that the state law enables and allows, uh, to exist in Michigan now, and all of the various checks and balances and licensing requirements and details and regulations that relate to each of those types of uses that are in the state statutes. The fact that the state statute, we also talked about how the state statute authorizes the township if it chooses to opt-in by adopting ordinances, can regulate, uh, from a zoning perspective, and also from its own licensing standpoint. So the state can issue its licenses under its statute, and if the township decides to opt-in, it can establish its own licensing regulations as well, as long as they don't get into the purity or, uh, quality of the medical marijuana materials and some of the other areas that the state has taken exclusive control over. Uh, but the township can, uh, do what it feels is best to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in the community if it chooses to allow these types of businesses into the community. Uh, as a result of those open house style presentations to the public, uh, and to the board, uh, the board met about two and a half, maybe three weeks ago, and sat down and, uh, had a discussion. Well, there was quite a bit more public participation at that meeting. It was primarily intended for the board to be discussing it, now that it had received the presentations and heard from the public. But the public was there again, and quite a bit more public participation at that meeting. And the board had its discussion regarding whether it wanted to go down this path at all, or at least whether it wanted to look into it further by seeing, uh, some draft ordinances, which, at the end of the day, at that meeting, uh, the direction was, yeah, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Casson and I were instructed to prepare draft ordinances, uh, for the township board to bring back at this meeting, and to take a look at them, uh, and see what they look like. Uh, and we've done that. We've prepared both a zoning ordinance amendment, that was primarily, uh, almost entirely authored by Mr. Casson, uh, the township's planning, uh, director here, and a licensing ordinance, which was prepared by myself, and establishes all of the different types of licenses and licensing regulations. Uh, they're before you to take a look at this evening. Uh, I'll get into the licensing ordinance, uh, first, in a moment, and then I think Mr. Casson will talk a little bit about the zoning ordinance. But as far as, uh, what we're here for this evening, um, if these were, before these can go forward, they, the zoning ordinance, first and foremost, has to go to the planning commission. And you don't want to pass a licensing ordinance until you know if you have the zoning ordinance. So they should run in tandem, the two ordinances. State law requires that zoning ordinance, and so do your, so do your ordinances, require that zoning ordinance to go to the planning commission where a public hearing is held. And that would be really the first step of any real consideration of adoption of these ordinances, would be at the planning commission. And the planning commission would, would really be focused on the zoning ordinance, but should have the licensing ordinance with it, so it can see how the package works together, right? And if the planning commission likes what it sees, and holds the public hearing, and decides that these are things that, from a planning perspective, and all the things the planning commission does, if they think that it fits, that it works for the community in their opinion, they make what's called a recommendation. They don't make a decision, they don't approve it, they don't adopt this law, they make a recommendation. Who do they make a recommendation to? They make it to the board. Then the ordinances would come back to the township board, and it would consider whether or not to enact those ordinances and put them into place in Lennox Township. So tonight is not a decision whether or not to adopt these ordinances. Tonight is for the, an opportunity for the township board to see what they look like, or what these ordinances could look like, uh, based on the drafts that we've prepared. And the board can then, if it seems fit at the end of the day, uh, meeting, uh, to, uh, forward them to the planning commission for processing and further consideration. It doesn't mean they will be adopted, doesn't mean they have to be adopted, it just means you're sending them on their way to the planning commission for consideration. When they come back to you, or if they come back to you from the planning commission with a favorable recommendation, then you would consider whether or not to adopt them. If the planning commission gives them a disfavorable recommendation, you can still consider whether or not to adopt them at that point in time. But the bottom line is, they would come back to the township board. So that's it. The, the background in how we got to where we are today, and what we're here for today. I hope everybody, I hope I've explained that clearly enough for the public and for everybody, uh, on the board to get an idea of what we're here for. Uh, and with that, I'll, I'll get into the licensing ordinance a bit here. That is the, clearly, the much more detailed ordinance that has a large level of regulatory provisions to it, uh, which I indicated during my presentations at the three prior meetings. Uh, I think I indicated that the licensing part of this is where you really get into a lot of the details of regulating, um, various aspects of these five different types of facilities, if you were to allow them into the community. Um, the way that this is written up, this is written up, uh, per the discussions, such that it would allow all five types of facilities to get licenses in Lennox Township, but no more than three of each type of facility. So you, you're not, if you adopted this ordinance at some point in the future, you would not be allowing more than three grow operations, you would not be allowing more than three, um, processing centers, you would not be allowing more than three distribution centers, um, and so forth. So there would be a maximum of three licenses for each of the five types of facilities allowed in Lennox Township under this draft ordinance. The state law allows you to choose how many you wish to allow to get licenses in your community, so that's specifically authorized under state law. It doesn't put a cap on it, and it doesn't put a limit on it. You can say zero, or you can say more than three. We've put three in here because that was some of the discussion. It wasn't a decision, but you have to start somewhere. And, uh, that's where we started with this draft ordinance. Uh, it also contains extensive provisions on how these, uh, licenses would be processed at the township, how they'd be submitted, what sort of application material and information needs to be provided. As you can see in here, there is extensive information that any of the applicants would need to provide in order to just apply for the license. Then there's the review process. Who does it get reviewed by? It gets reviewed by police, by fire, by planning, by zoning, uh, by the treasurer's office, to go through all the information that's been provided in those applications. And each of those reviews would result in the issuance of a report for, uh, the issuance of the license, or proceeding forward with the license. Um, there's a, essentially, a two-step process where the, the, uh, the license can be, uh, received what's called a provisional approval certificate. That would be the first, basically, a tentative or preliminary determination to issuing the license, and that would be made by the township board. Now, the township clerk's office is the one that, under the way that this is drafted, would receive the application. Usually, license applications in communities are received and handled, the paperwork is handled by the clerk's office, and that's why I did that, but it can be the supervisor's office, it can be the zoning administrator. Again, I just put that in there because that's typical, but not exclusively how it's done. So, you know, if there's feedback to do it another way, if that's an issue, certainly that can be adjusted. But they are, the applications are received, and it's the clearinghouse of all the information. So the reports that I mentioned, from each of the departments, police, fire, and so forth, come back to the clerk. Then they get assembled, they get brought to the township board, uh, after the application is deemed to be completed and fully submitted, and the board decides whether to issue a provisional approval certificate based on the standards that are in the ordinance. And the idea there is to provide, um, the applicants the opportunity to see that, yes, the board is in favor of us getting this license, but we haven't gotten our state license yet, and we haven't necessarily built our facility yet. But we've submitted all the plans for it, but we still need to get zoning approval, planning approval, maybe CBA approval of variances, we need to get our state approval. Once we have all those things lined up, then we come back and we can submit all those things to the clerk's office, and if they're all there, then the license can be issued. So the license isn't actually issued until everything is done, including the state license being issued. The township license being issued is the last step in the whole process. Then, ordinance goes on. Like I said, it's a very detailed ordinance, it has a lot of, a lot of provisions, and if for each type of facility, there are certain regulations that apply to them, that are specific to the various, the five different types of facilities. Then there are also general requirements that are going to be applicable to each facility in terms, to all the facilities, in terms of odors, security, um, and other signage and advertising, authorization for inspections along the way, uh, warning signs regarding no underage individuals, and exactly what needs to be on those warning signs that are kept in the facility, um, uh, information regarding cultivation of the marijuana, and, um, reporting of crimes, and various prohibited apps within the facilities. All those are laid out in the last part of the licensing ordinance. There are also insurance requirements that have to be complied with for each facility, and, uh, clarification that all other laws remain applicable, that this ordinance doesn't supersede the state law and so forth. Um, the ordinance, at the beginning, you may have noticed when you read this ordinance, it has quite a few disclosure provisions, because, as we've said, I think, at every meeting we've had, marijuana is illegal to possess and to grow under federal law and to use, it's all a violation of federal law. So there's disclaimer provisions that I put in the beginning of the ordinance, to make sure that there's clear understanding that we're not saying this isn't a violation of law by adopting this ordinance, we're not assisting or aiding you in violating that federal law, we're just following the state law and doing what our state says you can do in our communities with regard to medical marijuana, only not recreation. Uh, and so we're just following our state laws, and that makes it clear that to anybody that is entering into, uh, the community wanting to open one of these facilities, fully on notice, I'm sure they already are, they've been at the meetings, they're fully aware of that, that they're taking a risk, that technically it's, it's not in compliance with federal law, they understand that there is a potential, that the federal government could change its position in terms of whether or not to prosecute, uh, those things, which, uh, the prior administration in Washington, they indicated that they're not going to pursue those issued materials, and that could change at any time. And that's why I put that in there, so that there's no outward indication that the township board, or township, or personnel of the township that process these applications are saying to anybody, or the public in general, that, um, that this is necessarily lawful under federal law. We're just saying, our state has said it's okay, and so we're following through with the state, what the state says. The last thing I want to point out, and I'm sorry, but it is a long ordinance, so I want to get it all out there, because we've spent a lot of time to get to this point, so I want to get it all out there. But the last part is something that I left open-ended at this point, uh, and that is the violations and penalties. I was, there was never a discussion about this level of detail in terms of if you violate this ordinance, if you operate without a license, which would be, there's all sorts of ways to violate this ordinance, but probably the one, main one is, you open up a facility without getting a license. What will that be punishable by? And I think the board knows the difference between civil infractions and misdemeanors, we've had that discussion. Misdemeanors, of course, are punishable by jail, and a fine, or both. Uh, civil infrac, and that's a crime, it goes on your criminal record. A civil infraction, on the other hand, does not go on your criminal record, uh, and it's, but it's punishable by a fine. Uh, it's also punishable by, uh, possible injunction relief. So for example, if somebody, uh, opens a medical marijuana facility, and if you have it listed as a civil infraction, um, the judge in the civil infraction case can order them to close their facility until they get a valid license or something to that effect. So those are the two things to talk about. You don't have to really make that decision now, we can put that on the back burner, and if this comes back, I just wanted to mention it so it's in your heads, rattling around for when it, for if it comes back for final adoption. It's something we have to decide, uh, before this gets adopted by the board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Casson for the zoning end of the.
Thank you, Mr. Joppick.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Casson.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. The, uh, in addition to the regulating ordinance, or the licensing ordinance specifies that there is, uh, a need to comply with the zoning ordinance, and what we have done are made some suggestive provisions, and they're just placeholders for now.
Could you check your mic, please?
I'm sorry. Uh, there's placeholders for now, that, based on our, the input from the public, and discussions with the board, and our research, that we're providing as, uh, recommended zoning requirements or zoning conditions. Uh, there are your typical, very general, like those licensing ordinance, there's typical, very general procedures and provisions that apply to all uses within the township, such as setbacks, and parking, uh, lighting, those kind of things, uses of that. But there's also, what we're providing are the more specific requirements for the five different types of, uh, medical marijuana facilities. Uh, to briefly summarize, each are listed, three of them, medical marijuana provisioning, which is your sales, your grower, uh, and your processor. We're suggesting that they be subject to special land use approval. Now, special land use approval requires, basically, the difference is, in addition to meeting the general requirements in order, you also need a public hearing, and you have to determine that it won't be disruptive to the area. And it gives a little bit more discretion on the part of the planning commission and the township board. Uh, for specific, under each of those, for medical marijuana, uh, provisioning centers or sales facilities, again, it's, uh, requiring special land use in either of our two commercial, or two of our three commercial districts, being the community commercial and the commercial general district. Uh, we're suggesting that all operations be enclosed within a building, we're setting sp, specifying hours of operation of nine to nine, nine to nine. Uh, we're suggesting that no drive-through operations be allowed, uh, no outdoor seating areas, uh, we're suggesting that the facility be located on a main thoroughfare, a main road, as defined by the local county department of roads. Mostly, that's your mile roads, uh, the main roads. And, and things like, uh, can be no closer to four thousand feet from a church, school, park, residential playground, residential zone property, no closer than five hundred feet to each other. And then there's some consideration, some statements that has to comply with the state Medical Marijuana Licensing Act, and our own licensing act, and there's some different provisions that it has to provide with signage, some signage regulations, basically, no big green leaves and those kind of things. Uh, same holds true for the grower, grower operation, the only difference is, it's, uh, it required to be special land use in an industrial district, either of our two, has to be completely enclosed, has to be an inter-thoroughfare. Uh, oh, here's something I forgot to mention, that they have to be connected to municipal water and sewer, and that's basically for fire operations, and those kind of things. Uh, and then same distancing requirement from each other, from schools and parks, compliance with all other provisions. Medical, uh, the processors, subject to special land use, also in the industrial districts, all similar language that appeared in the others above, in terms of distancing, uh, in terms of impact and surrounding being under major road water and sewer. Then the two that probably would have the least impact, uh, on the surrounding uses is the transporter, the secure transporter, and the medical marijuana safety compliance facility. Well, a secure transporter is basically a secure trucking operation, and we're suggesting that most of our trucking operations are allowed in industrial districts. So we're allowing this as permitted use in the industrial district. Again, it has to comply with all the signage regulations and zoning regulations, and, and the licensing act as Mr. Joppick had indicated. And lastly, the safety compliance facility, which is just a testing facility, I mean, if you, if you look at it, there's really no difference between testing blood or testing medical marijuana. So we're allowing that as a permitted use in any industrial district, in any office district. And, uh, the only thing that would be, uh, in addition to that, is it has to be, uh, subject to the licensing requirements that we're potentially could adopt. These are suggestions from the board, they're not written in stone, uh, the public, I mean, I've talked to some of the public already today, that are hoping that some of these provisions are in there, and some of them wouldn't have been in there. Uh, the public would have an opportunity, when the hearing goes, the, the ordinance changes, goes to the planning commission, to make that case known, the planning commission at that time could certainly make changes to this, make recommendations to the board, and the board, when it came to them, probably in December, could also make changes. So this is what we're proposing at this time. If the township board today decides to continue with the process, recognizing you're not approving it yet, uh, we're looking at a planning commission meeting on November nineteenth.
Is it the nineteenth or the twentieth?
It's Monday, isn't it the nineteenth?
Twentieth.
I apologize.
You can call him on Sunday if you want.
No.
It'll be the twentieth.
Whatever that third, or fourth Monday of, uh. And typically, the planning commission meeting meets at seven thirty, I think, and that I would recommend, make it easier for the public, maybe we make it a little bit earlier.
We do, we meet at seven thirty, if you're ready. A little bit earlier, as you suggested.
I was suggesting maybe that.
What time would you, would you suggest, Mr. Casson?
Six thirty. Six thirty or seven, six thirty would be nice.
Do you possibly delay the meeting?
Yes.
I personally don't have a problem with six thirty as a board representative on planning, but, uh, you haven't talked to.
I haven't talked to anybody. I could call the chairman of the board.
I couldn't. I can call Steve too, yeah, and I could call the board, that's fine.
Is there any questions on the board for Mr. Joppick or Mr. Casson at this time?
I do.
Are there any questions with the board for Mr. Jopik or Mr. Cassin at this time?
I do know.
On the, the five categories, the growers, you were allowing, you were proposing allowing three. Is that, each, I understand there's a class of so many plants that will come up. Is that three of each class or three total?
I think it's three total, isn't it?
That's one of the reasons I haven't highlighted and yellowed on your copy, because I had that exact same question. We hadn't really discussed that at any of the meetings. Perhaps that would be something for planning commission to weigh in on.
Well, I could bring that up at our meeting. I, looking at that, there's been some questions on whether three of each or three total. So, we can discuss that at planning, this, you know.
I would suggest, if I may, that when we do have that discussion, be prepared to clarify this. If it's going to be three of any, we should say that, so that the ordinance reads clearly. You picked it up, it doesn't read clearly the way it's written, because we know there's three different classes.
If there's a chance, would you, well, Steve's usually here, would you be available for the planning commission meeting at this time?
I already have it in my book. I already have it in my book, give it back.
Okay.
Perfect.
It was for me. Any other questions for Mr. Jopik? Who should be asked at this time?
I actually have a question under the annual fee required. Section 2, item B, says $5,000 per licensed facility sent forth by the resolution adopted by the board. That is per category, so if somebody happens to stack their licenses, it's $5,000 each, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
And that would be up to that amount, and the board is going to need to adopt. If it proceeds with this, we'll need to prepare some resolutions, one establishing the application review fee, and one establishing this annual fee.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have none. Mr. Jopik? I just have a follow-up comment to make regarding some of the things I've highlighted in here. This is a work in progress. It's a very detailed ordinance. As I was preparing to finalize this, I realized there's some overlap regarding some of the order controls or admissions controls, regulations in the ordinance. I'll need to clean that up before it goes to the planning commission, if the board's going to put this forward. I've also been tracking some new legislation that's in Lansing right now, amending the very statute we're talking about implementing. And some of that, those changes relate directly to the townships that they need to regulate, and it clears up some things, but it also raises some questions about if those amendments don't get put into place. It raises some questions about the current state of the law, the current statute as it exists today. And I may want to add some languaging here before it goes to the planning commission to make it very clear that any license, that the township is not authorizing the issuance of any licenses beyond three, for each category, or whatever the number in the bill be. So, that there's no question, no ambiguity in that regard, and we send it up to the state. Because if you remember, a copy of this, of the, both of these ordinances would go up to the state if any applications are received. And so, if they can see our regulations, we want to make it very clear to them, don't issue more than three.
Mr. Jopik, if this goes forward, if we set it at three, sir, are we legal? We're not set in stone, that we could add that later if we chose to add more facilities.
Yes, that's correct. You can evaluate this ordinance, or so can you any ordinance, and change the number that you.
Not that we would, but I'm just, I just told that out there, I didn't know.
Right. If you reduce the number, we might, might have some non-conforming use requirements in terms of the zoning applicable to the properties, and I don't know that you'd be able to, well, we'd have to look into whether you would be able to withdraw or not renew one of the licenses to get down, if you take the number less. But that's a bridge we cross if that eventually ever came to be. But adding to it is certainly not an issue at all.
And we can reduce.
You can reduce. It's just we'll have to have a discussion about how that impacts. If you've already issued three, and you reduce it, we'll have to evaluate what that means from a legal perspective.
Okay.
For the three that exist.
If there is a difference in the section seven denial of application sets for felonies and convictions, for felonies and misdemeanors, and then, if you go to the secure transporter under section two, it reads a little bit differently, as far as one says five years and the other one says 10. Which one would take precedence?
Well, I'll tell you what, instead of spending the time trying to parse through the language, I'll make sure that they are consistent. I think the intent is to be consistent. But if one word is different, of course, that can make a difference. We need to, it's exactly the time that we need to point it out. We'll take a look at it. I believe it depends on whether it's a drug-related or not a drug-related offense.
I just wasn't sure, because I read 10 years one place and 5 years somewhere else, so.
Yes.
I wouldn't ask.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody going through it, because I know it's very dry material to get through.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I just kind of.
Oh, that's, that's why we're here. Absolutely, ask whoever you'd like.
We're asking that within 30 days after the end of the state fiscal year, the license is.
Speak up, please.
Speak up a little bit, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Says within 30 days after the end of the state fiscal year, each licensee shall transmit to the township or financial statements of the licensee's total operations. I just wasn't sure what that accomplished, what we were trying to do there.
Well, it's a, it's certainly not a mandatory provision. None of this necessarily is. The idea is to see what sort of a financial impact the facilities are having on the community. Much of the reasoning given by a lot of the individuals from the industry that have appeared at our meetings are because they support their position, saying that this is going to be extremely successful businesses brought into the community, which are going to employ a lot of people, and they're going to be a great financial success. Reporting of that success helps to bolster, establish the positions here. Additionally, when, in terms of the applications that are submitted, there's financial information that's submitted. And there are also taxes that emanate from the facilities that have to be paid to the state of Michigan, and the township receives a part of that. Seeing what they're producing through their records verifies that we're getting, perhaps be able to verify that we're getting the appropriate amount from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion, questions for Mr. Jopik or Mr. Cassin? Got to take these one at a time, and the first one with the medical marijuana zoning ordinance amendment. I make a motion that we proceed with the, our A zoning ordinance amendment, we send that to the planning commission for discussion.
I second.
Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Next one, motion passes, letter B. Medical marijuana license ordinance. I also make a motion that we proceed, does that go to planning, the licensing end of it?
Yes, I'm recommending that you send them together, even though technically they don't, the licensing ordinance does not have to go to the planning commission. It only makes sense to, because they are read together.
Okay.
I'm not smooching you, keeping this on.
See shape, so we see. Okay. I make a motion, we send that to the planning commission for discussion also.
I second that.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number six, public comment. Sir, please stop the podium. Please state your name and address and record, please.
My name is John Sarah. My address is 14635 Towering Oaks Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan. I am a property owner in this community, and am interested in procuring licenses. I have two questions, one for the attorney, other for the planner. Would that be a total of 15 licenses? If you're permitting three operations in five licenses, five, the five varieties of licenses, would be a total of 15 licensed granted? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, but only three of each.
Correct.
In more than any type of facility.
I understand, but there would be a grand total of 15. And in your estimation, in your, in your opinion, would this, if there were someone that was not in compliance with the law, would you recommend that it be a misdemeanor, a criminal action, or would it be tortuous? Would it be, would it be a tort, or would it be a criminal act?
Mr. Seabird, am I okay with that?
Yeah, just for the honest, this is public comment, typically it's not a question-and-answer format.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Jopik, if you'd like to answer the question, we.
Okay. By all means. Thank you, thank you. Well, you know, at this point, I really don't have a recommendation on that. This is, these are newer types of ordinances across the state, obviously. Not many communities have adopted them. And I have seen it as civil infraction, and I have seen it as misdemeanor. I think the community has to make that decision on a case-by-case basis. You can always start as a misdemeanor, and switch later to a civil infraction, and that may be something that the township wants to follow. And it certainly is something that can be discussed. I think the idea is to understand the difference between the two, and decide what fits best in this community.
Understand.
And perhaps some feedback from the sheriff's department would be helpful on that as well.
And I, the other, the other thing that I am very curious about is, Mr. Cassin had some recommendations, and this is a question, I think it would illuminate, it would elucidate it to everyone, and that is, I know that you're anxious that, for the city water and sewer to be utilized. But in terms of growing of medical marijuana, water is always an advantage, but I'm not quite sure about the sewer part of it. And, because it is, it's a crop, and I don't know about, why, why would it be a requirement to have sewer? And that would eliminate every farmer that is not hooked up to the sewer. And even, there are many farmers, as people who would like to participate in this, and I happen to be here with my, one of my partners, who owns 240 acres of farmland, has been a longstanding farmer in this community, who's struggling to maintain a family farm. And I mentioned at the last, at the last meeting, how important it is to incorporate people who live here, who have farms here, who are struggling to maintain their farms, that this may be, in fact, a godsend to some of them. And I just would like to hear why the sewer would be.
I can answer that, Mr. Tavik, if you'd like at this time. It's, it's our utmost concern for one reason. We're losing approximately a million and a half dollars a year on our sewer line. Our total amount of customers, I believe, what's our total customer count at this time? For sewer alone? Or sewer, did you ask that? Ballpark?
It was 15, 16, but it's.
I'm sorry?
It was about 15 or 16, but it's a little.
Correct. So, from 26 mile road, the whole length almost, and the whole grass quarter, 15 to 16 customers only, we're losing all that revenue. So, our largest portion of revenue that we get from, for example, pine tree acres, is used on a sewer line where we have no customers. So, our number one need is to get customers to outpay for the sewer line, so we don't have to raise any taxes, which we haven't done, so we can keep providing the same services that we have provided, to keep everything as checked. We have not raised the sewer rates or the water rates, other than what's been pass-through cost to us. So, we're trying to keep everything as affordable and create as much growth as we can. The only way we're going to do it is to try and knock that debt out, or try to get some of that paid for.
Would it be acceptable to the board if someone said that they would be willing to pay sewer tax, instead, you know, if they are, that are not hooked up to the sewer, a sewer tax?
The problem is, it's still, it's, it's still to pay for that asset. That, that's what I see. And that asset right now, just so everybody knows, that's $85 a lineal foot, just for the sewer. It's not including tab fees and things of that nature. So, it's an extreme cost to us. This was all put in expecting thousands of homes and.
Sewer goes right past here in Grashett, though, correct?
Correct. And what we're trying to do is create a positive, because as you know, stigmatized development with the landfill, and this is the way to bring something in here and create a positive out of it for our community. Pay off an asset, gain revenue, try to do the right thing. Other than, I, I'm not speaking for the board, but I don't want to raise taxes. I want to keep the same amount of services that we have in place. You know, we were able to actually increase services with luck, with less. And we want to try and keep that going, because like you said, some people are still barely making it, and to raise their taxes or to raise other fees on them, administration fees, I think would be devastating to them.
So, if someone had the sewer water available, but was in an agricultural zone, and they were willing to tap in, fantastic. That meets the requirement?
I would say, I think that's what we're looking at, the resounding possibilities at that point. Correct, Mr. Cassin? To try to accommodate those type of situations.
Good. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you asking that, because a lot, it's, it's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, ma'am. We have one right there.
General, with the legislature president, I know this is not a question and answer. Couple things came up that weren't clear to me. First of all, I have a big problem with that number three. To me, that's too much, starting off too much. This is a little township. We're not Denver, Colorado. This is a very small township. I know you're just, you just can't wait to get businesses down here, and, and increase our taxes and things like that. That's not what we talked about a few months ago. We talked about not turning this into the look of Chesterfield, up and down the Grashett, things like that. I have no idea what the growth.
Can you put the microphone down a little?
I don't have any idea what the growing process is about the marijuana. I don't know what the plants look like, I mean, the buildings, what are supposed to look like. I don't know if, this is the only quarter you're talking about, it's 26 mile and Grashett. But again, this is what we were talking about, making this a big area to look like Chesterfield.
Could I, could I address that for you, please? I know it's not question and answer.
Go right ahead, please.
One thing we were, we did discuss was to proceed cautiously and conservatively. And when we looked at the first ordinance, especially up in the rural areas of Pin County, how many company licenses were they allowing for each one?
It was unlimited.
Unlimited.
For where?
For example, like Pin County, unlimited amount of licensing. So, for us, we had to look at, did we start out with one? How do you pick just one, without saying there's favoritism or things of that nature? We tried to set it up as conservatively as we possibly could, based on other instances we've seen. I think there was another one that had 25, I believe, Mr. Cassin, we looked at. So, we were trying to be as conservative as possible in a rough draft. Not saying that that's solid, but we're trying to say, how could we, how could we make it look like? We want to start very low, give everybody an opportunity, so that's not being selective or personally singling one person out over another.
Just don't have to do that anyway, when you get their, when they, for them to order to put their license, their plans in and things like that.
The way we're going to set it up is based on who puts their licenses first, so we're not picking a specific individual. And in passing, if we get a bunch that are sending at the same time, it'd be under a lottery system. That's what we plan on doing at this point under a rough draft.
Okay.
So, we're trying to keep it as fair, and we're, we're not deciding based on one individual, and trying to limit it with the whole length of 26 mile road, the whole length of Grashett. And you're talking facilities too, that hopefully will pay for this, this water.
Okay.
In the sewer that we're talking about.
I thought that was a little strange that you said we are stigmatized by our landfill in your.
We are stigmatized by our landfill. It's our greatest.
When we're marijuana growers, are we going to be stigmatized with that also? Marijuana growers, are we going to be stigmatized with that also?
It's our greatest revenue source is the landfill, but also it's very hard to find development that'll go next to it. And that's where the stigmatism lays, the stigmatism lays, and also the prison that we have on 26. It's hard to find development, and I think Mr. Kess, as the planner, will tell you, it's hard to find something that'll go right next to that without it affecting it.
Okay. One more thing is we haven't approached the subject of odors. And with only 500 feet between, I'm not sure what, true to schools, whatever, I don't think that's going to be an issue, especially with this open land that maybe people want to sell. That's the way I see it. If any members of the board do not want a growing operation within 500 feet of their own homes, then they should think twice about where they put these and let these people, whoever, whoever you agree with. I mean, none of you would like that. In fact, Mrs. Gurley said the same thing the last little meeting we had, that you wouldn't want it next to your home.
I don't think anybody would want it next to their home.
Well, it's true, but when you're putting it, when you're putting, and you're considering the odors and everything else, and you're talking about, somebody said something about the big piece of land behind Meyer. What about Meyer? What are they going to, what are, what are they going to like? Are they going to like that? Is the new health center that went up there, are they going to like that? You're dealing with odors from our landfill, but you're going to be dealing with big time odors from this too.
Well, I don't know if you noticed, Mr. Kess, but then in part of, all right, I don't know if it's Mr. Joppick, but one of the things is order control, systems in place. There would have to be order control systems with.
Is there some kind of regulation of type of order control?
I'm sure there would be.
You're sure there would be? Is there a standard for order control?
Go ahead, Mr. Joppick. Yes, right now there are multiple provisions in there. Some of the language actually overlaps, which is what I was talking about. We need to have one set of regulations. But there are quite a few provisions on odor emissions controls. And one of the general standards that I remember off the top of my head is that it shall not be perceptible at the property line or outside of the facility. That's a standard that we can't, obviously, you won't be able to smell it on the next tour of the image.
Is that a possibility?
And if you can, and it can be detectable and testified to, then a violation could occur. And it could affect future renewals of the license or perhaps a suspension or replication of the license.
So with the wind's going in the opposite, the way you want it to go, which is towards your home, and you're smelling that operation, who's going to go and say, hey, something's wrong here?
Should call in, put a complaint, and then an officer would appear to determine whether it exists and proceed with enforcement. And if I'm recalling things correctly, you shouldn't even smell anything outside of the building for enclosed facilities.
Well, since I've never been to one, a place that's growing, I have no idea if that's true. I just know it smells and you use a lot of water and a lot of electricity involved. And now that you talk about that, like they asked one question about the three, you said something about three classes of plants. Does that mean you can do the three, the three classes of plant in one building? If you can't, does that mean you're talking about?
It's not types of plants, it's the numbers of plants. There's three classes, A, B, and C, and it depends on the number of plants that you're going to grow in the facility.
Okay, number of plants.
Not types.
Not types of plants, okay. So still not talking, okay, so we're still sticking, I mean, even if we stuck with the number three, that would still be three. Not say, okay, I have this, this many, I can go and make another plant. We can only have three plants, if that number comes up.
Not three plants.
Three growing facilities.
Three growing facilities totally, total in the community.
Okay. Not depending on the number of plants that they have.
Well, that's one of the things that we were discussing is something that the planning.
What size of grow operations are you?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Benji Vitasi, 332-550-29-MILE-Roe. First of all, thanks for doing the work. Glad I don't have to do it. Anyway, just for the three, three licenses to House Bill 5189, just introduced, that being to limit the stacking of licenses to two in a single facility owned by a single operators. That might be a suggestion, attorney alluded to, other things going on licensing, might make it easier to follow that in your decision process. The other one for the order control on that is I do have to support that. If you have a 29 mile road, it's still the smell of landfill. It's just something, if you don't like it, you do have to make a complaint and then let the process go through. But again, as looking, Pinconny went with unlimited. I still have a question, some of the, if you have a lot of open vacant warehouses that could easily convert it to grow facilities, I think they're going to have an advantage of us. So I hope we get some business, but I think some of the other communities are maybe ahead of us because they have facilities that can easily convert it. So I want to have a pipe dream that we're going to magically have all this wonderful booming business where it might be just a couple of things. But again, thanks for putting the effort into it. The other question I have, are these draft ordinances available for the public total count?
Mr. Joppick?
Oh, well, they, they can be, although they're not, they're just drafts. It'd be best to wait until the agenda for the planning commission has been prepared so that the public can request that it's back up because that would be a more finalized.
They're very sure at that time whether the, she, that's going to be changed, I can put up.
It's accustomed to extensive things. There's a lot of back and forth on, as long as it's clearly marked draft, so there was no illusion that this is the final product. But so that the last minute trying to clean important topics out of that, instead of right before the meeting is really not adequate for anybody to take what's in the ordinance and then kind of speeds up the process. The other one too is, is we are under no time limit. We don't have to have this done by such and such a date. And I think we're making progress, but I don't think you should be, be hoping that we have to be done with anything by December of 15, so. But anyways, keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jackie Langwith. I'm with Cannabis Attorneys of Michigan, and I know Denise Polachala, our firm founder, was here and gave one of the presentations to you, I believe. I just want to say thank you for all the work you've done, echoing the former speaker. And thank you for taking the time to educate yourself and get all the information and as you're continuing to do this, because we firmly believe that education is the most important thing on this, and then that will allow all of you who know your community to make the best decision for your community. Just a couple of things, because we do, we've been collecting all the ordinances from all the different communities. Yes, Pinconny Township has unlimited of the Class C grow. They allow five Class A and zero Class B and 25 of the other facilities. As far as doing it first come, first served, there's a township, Leoni Township, where they have, they're accepting them starting tomorrow. People started camping out on Friday to submit their application. So something to think about as far as, are you going to have people camping out if you do the first come, first served? Kalamazoo has a draft where they're doing a lottery to prevent that. And that's only if you have caps. Obviously, if you have unlimited, then it doesn't matter. You might just say, oh, we'll accept them during this period of time, and then we'll accept the most complete applications and that sort of thing. And some communities, the ones that are doing the unlimited or having the larger caps, they're letting the market forces say, okay, this is how many we're going to allow. And that's what Kalamazoo is doing as far as the grows. They're saying, you know what, the market's going to determine how many can survive. A $5,000 unrefundable application fee, Pinconny Township made like $250,000 on the very first day, or, I'm sorry, it was probably Bangor Township, getting their applications. And just one last thing to keep in mind, when you do opt in earlier, you, that revenue slice, you will be getting a slice of that, the 3% excise tax. It's going to be a bigger slice because there's going to be fewer communities that have opted in. And so that's just something to think about. And I just want to say, if there's any questions about anything, we, as I said, and Denise I know has mentioned, we're firmly believing in education for you guys to make the decision that's best for you. But if you do have any questions, we actually have been doing this for a long time, and Ms. Polachala was one who, was one of the ones who actually thought that it's better to get medical marijuana out of the homegrown business where you can't regulate it. And if it's next door to you, you can't say anything about it because you can't prevent someone from doing what they're allowed to do under the M M A. So making it a commercial, regulated industry is going to give you the most control, and it will cut down on those homegrown businesses. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Joppick?
Just to follow up on one of the aspects, the Kalamazoo ordinance provides for a lottery for provisioning centers only. The others are first come, first served type of setup, I believe. What we've done under this draft, what I put together was for all the types of facilities, we tried to make it such that it could live forever and not just contemplate one day where there may be a lineup of people or a bunch received in the mail, because it can be submitted by mail or in person. 10 years from now, you might get two applications at one time. How do you stamp them in terms of timing? So the way it's set up is that for any type of license, in this draft anyway, for any type of license, if there are more than one that are submitted, well, first of all, it's a first come, first served. They get timed and dated by the clerk's office and assigned a number when they're received. And number one, get the number one, and two and three, and those are going to be the first three that go through for whatever type of facility it may be. But if five applications are received in the mail in one day, or if five people show up with the counter at the opening of business one day, or a larger number than that, that's when a lottery would be conducted. They'd all be taken, they'd be assigned, they'd be assigned, they'd be put into a lottery and pulled out, and that would be the order that they would all be given and processed. And so if it happened on the first day, or if it happened 10 years from now, you'd have an ordinance in place that would be able to handle it.
Right. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Other votes have been made at this time? Motion.
I make a motion, Lee adjourned at 6:12.
I second.
Motion by treasurer Arnold, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion passes, Lee adjourned.